You're watching City Channel 4, your window to our community.
Okay, well, let's begin the Iowa City City Council work session for July 18, 2017. And the first topic on the agenda, as many of you already know, is a presentation of the final Bicycle Master Plan and a preliminary discussion about the Gilbert Street situation. So Kent, are you starting for us?
I will start. Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, Kent Ralston, Transportation Planner. As you know, on your agenda tonight is, as the mayor just mentioned, the draft final plan presentation for the Bike Master Plan, and then a quick update on the Gilbert Street corridor study. With us here tonight, we've got several members of the consultant team, Kevin Neal and Paul Wojcicki from Alta Planning &amp; Design, and then Marty Schuchert and Corey Scott, both from RDG. But before we get started, I wanted to just quickly take a minute to remind us all how we got to this point. As you all know, you had adopted the strategic planning goal of obtaining the Gold Bike-Friendly Communities designation at your strategic planning sessions last year. Subsequent to that, you gave staff direction to complete the citywide Bike Master Plan, and then also the corridor study of Gilbert Street, basically between Market and McAllister, and that was for the potential for a four-to-three lane conversion with possible addition of bike lanes. Kevin Neal with Alta gave a presentation at your March work session on sort of the initial plans and processes for the Bike Master Plan, and then he also gave an update on the public participation that far. Now, we're pleased to have the final draft completed for review. And I'd just like to say it's been a really good process thus far. There's been a lot of public input, a lot of really good public input, and a lot of passion behind this, so it's been a lot of fun in terms of the planning documents we put together because they're not always like this. So it's been really exciting, and I have no doubt that if we can complete even a portion of what's in the final plan, that we'll be able to achieve that Gold Bike Master -- or excuse me, the Gold Bike-Friendly Communities designation. With that, I'll turn it over to the consultant, and of course, I'll be here as well as some other staff members, Darian's here and Sarah, who both did some heavy lifting on the plan as well, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thanks Kent. Please remind us of your names, please, when you come up, because, you know, we don't see you often enough for some of us to have your names embedded in our brains.
Of course. Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Kevin Neal with Alta Planning &amp; Design, and we're pleased to be here this evening to present the draft Bicycle Master Plan. What we'd like to cover tonight will be a quick rundown of some of the key elements of the plan. We'll start with the vision and the goals that are at the foundation of the whole process and document. We'll look at the project schedule, talk about some additional public engagement activities that have happened since our March 21st meeting. We'll look at the bicycle network itself, our recommendations to create a full, complete bicycle network, and other program and policy recommendations that really support that network and create a holistic approach to creating a bicycle-friendly community. Then we'll move on and wrap up with a discussion about how we're going to implement the plan, and look at elements like immediate actions that can be taken within the 2017-2018 calendar years, how we prioritize our routes, phasing those recommendations over a 10-year timeframe, and then, of course, costs and funding without which we can't move ahead, and maintaining the network as it's in place and making sure that those considerations are kept in mind as the network grows and develops. So our vision for Iowa City with regards to bicycling is that Iowa City will be a bicycle-friendly community in which bicycling is a safe, comfortable, convenient, and preferred mode of travel and recreation for people of all ages and abilities. Iowa City residents and leaders value bicycling as a means to support a strong and diverse economy, foster healthy and active lifestyles, promote transportation equity, advance environmental sustainability, and enhance quality of life. We're packing a lot into that vision statement, but it's unfolded in each of our goals and objectives. And what we've done is create a framework for those planned goals that follow the League of American Bicyclists Building Blocks of a Bicycle Friendly Community. Those six elements that we're looking at are engineering, education, encouragement, enforcement, evaluation, and equity. So for each of those individual goals, we have objectives and specific recommendations to help further advance those goals. So we got here to this point today through a planning process that began with a kickoff meeting in late November, early December, and we really started our community engagement after completing an existing conditions analysis and learning from members of the public what was important to them with regards to bicycling, and what their vision of a bicycle-friendly community looks like for Iowa City. We, from there, developed vision and goals, continued to meet with our technical and bicycle advisory committees, representing city staff and community agencies and advocacy organizations that have been instrumental to date and will continue to be instrumental in supporting bicycling in the city and in the region at large. We, from there, began developing our draft bicycle network, and then added on to that programs, policies, and other recommendations to create a full, well-rounded plan. We took that back to the public in May on the 25th and got some additional feedback with regard to our initial draft network, our initial programs and policies, and have worked to refine those over the last month and a half, and are excited to have that in your hands and get your feedback tonight. Since we met in March, additional public engagement elements that we had yet to undertake included a junior high survey with Southeast Junior High students. We had over 300 students tell us about their views on bicycling, what's important to them. We'll get to that in a second. First, I also want to talk about our second open house, and I mentioned this is where we gathered input on our recommended network and programs and policies. We had about 40 people in attendance, and the feedback we had covered some of the initial route recommendations. People gave detailed feedback with regard to which projects they felt would be most beneficial, either for themselves or for the community at large, and additional recommendations that may not have been addressed through the initial recommendations on these maps. So we were able to take that input and make some changes to the network to address additional comments and feedback, and did that so in the month of June. We also had great input on our vision and goals, and what we see in this slide is that most residents were really interested in seeing that bicycle network, the physical network for bicycling grow, which is really, I think, representative of all the hard work that's been done by a lot of community partners in Iowa City to really advance bicycling and create that culture of bicycling, and now it's time for the network to catch up with the residents and what the advocacy organizations have done to advance bicycling. With regard to prioritizing the network, we asked community residents which values were important to them as we start to look at how these individual projects meet community needs. And what we saw from our community engagement at that second open house mirrored what we learned from our technical and bicycle advisory committees just the week before, where some of the key elements for building that network were really focused on closing gaps between existing bicycle facilities, improving safety along corridors where there is already a lot of bicycling activity, connecting people to parks and schools, and developing and expanding that network in a manner that reaches underserved populations and expands that network to people who currently don't have access to bicycle facilities. We also received some additional feedback on supporting programs, and what was most of concern to attendees at that second workshop were creating public education campaigns to help bicyclists and motorists better share the road and build that culture of mutual respect and responsibility, bicycle skills training courses for children and adults, and interesting programs like Create a Commuter Program designed to help people learn the basics of bike commuting, bicycle repair, and start to feel more comfortable choosing bicycling as a mode of transportation. Now moving on to our junior high survey, again, I said we had about 300 responses, and what we learned from -- I think it was valuable to get this input, not only because the students that answered this questionnaire, they represent our next generation of not just bicyclists, but motor vehicle drivers, transit users, they're going to be independent travelers soon, if they're not already, and they have a great deal of understanding at a local scale of how to get around, and a lot of them use bikes now. The other reason I think it's a great tool to communicate the values that we're trying to advance through this plan and also learn what those values are of younger students in the community. Southeast Junior High has a really diverse population, and we can see kind of a broad cross-section of community residents and what's important to them. And as you can imagine, when kids talk about riding bikes, they don't think in the same terms a bicycle planner might about things like shared-use path design and bicycle facility types. For them, it's about speed, it's about freedom, a sense of independence that, you know, for many of us we've forgotten makes bicycling really, really exciting. We also learned a little bit about where kids are riding. A lot of kids are riding on sidewalks. Our wide sidewalks give a great place for kids to bike. Others are starting to venture onto trails, bicycling on-street. So these kids are using the system as it is, whether it's designated bicycle routes or the street network. And to be able to create safer places and encourage them to feel more safe and comfortable to ride is something that's front and center of this plan. Most kids do own a bike, but we see that a lot of them aren't bicycling to school. About 70% of respondents do not bike to school at all. Some do most days, less than 10%, and others do occasionally. But we are seeing that people, that our junior high students are bicycling just about everywhere else, whether it's around the neighborhood, to friends' houses in adjacent neighborhoods, and even riding on some of the local trails. The last element from our online survey that I briefly mentioned in our previous meeting, I want to hit on this before we move into our network discussions, because I think it's really representative of the community at large's understanding of what it takes to create a bicycle-friendly community. When we asked our survey respondents which strategies would have an impact on the community as far as increasing bicycling, what we saw, they understood it wasn't just about building bike lanes. It's about more than infrastructure. We have to create programs, policies, to help educate people about the benefits of bicycling and make people feel that it's something that they can actually do. So our recommendations reflect what we've learned, and where we'll start off our discussion, also mirroring where the public had their area of most concern, will be with the network itself. So for that, I'm going to turn it over to Marty Schuchert with RDG.
Thanks, Kevin. It is interesting, first of all, that junior high kids have a different concept of speed than maybe adults do. That's good to see, and that bikes are considered a fast means of transportation. Second, it is interesting, in the chart that Kevin just showed from the survey, that although the responses are really quite diverse in terms of the effectiveness of different kinds of programs, and it goes beyond infrastructure, that on-street facilities were really seen as being a bigger need or a more effective need by many of the respondents than bike lanes, although there's a lot of support for more trails, rather, for more trail development. But through most of the groups that we met with, most of the people we talked to, and many of the survey respondents, as we really sensed, the on-street system is very important. The trail system is largely in place, and we'll see that from some of the mapping that shows the network. There were a number of inputs that go into the network itself, that is, an evaluation of the streets, of the basic infrastructure that we have to work with, the perceptions of people who came to open houses and contributed to the process, the maps that you probably saw when Kevin presented the in-progress session in March that showed the desire patterns and the demand density patterns as well. So we were able, through the magic of computers, to review and overlay the proposed network over those maps to make sure that we were hitting the right points. And ultimately, our goal is to generate a network that meets a number of criteria and performance standards for network development that include getting people where they want to go directly, that provide a degree of -- a high degree of safety and security as they move through the system, that provides good experience, that doesn't just leave people off in the middle of nowhere, but has integrity in terms of continuity to other parts of the system. And the network that we have generated through that evaluation looks like this. It's hard to describe each of the individual routes, but a couple of major features, or major features of it, include the hierarchy of facilities. So on the map, you'll see the off-street bikeways colored in the darker green. Those are what we call the principal multi-use trails, so once it make up the backbone of the system. The lighter green are the separate, or the secondary, multi-use trails, the links, the park trails, and so forth, that are not necessarily transportation facilities, but link people from neighborhoods to other trails or provide access within parks. And then finally, the side paths are widened sidewalks, which are a significant part of Iowa City's overall system, the wider paths that operate along major streets. There's also a hierarchy of on-street bikeways. The principal routes generally will be covered by bike lanes or buffered bike lanes or some sort of facility that provides a discreet and distinct area for bicycles on the street, and are the principal ways by which we move people from one point to another. The secondary bikeways complement the principal routes. These tend to be low-volume or moderate-volume at worst secondary streets. They include a series of facilities we call bicycle boulevards, that is, streets that provide not bicycle-exclusive access, but are adapted to and comfortable for most riders. Bicycle boulevards provide pretty long, continuous routes that should provide a degree of protection when they cross arterial streets, but are generally the secondary routes in the system. Some of those are very high priority, but they don't involve the large capital investment or the larger capital investment of principal routes. They're neighborhood connectors. Those are routes that get people from the major system to specific destinations like schools or parks, so they're kind of the spur tracks of the system. And then finally, some corridors like Gilbert Street, that Paul will talk about a little bit later, that need further study. So the primary ones in that category do in fact involve Gilbert Street. The process still needs to be completed to assess the realism and feasibility of that kind of a conversion. And also, there's a recommendation in the plan that the actual physical bicycle infrastructure on the West Bank campus of the University of Iowa really does need to be studied. There have been some general policies included in the campus plan, but there are some various features on some of the streets, such as Newton Road, that really need to be looked at in more detail in terms of where bikes go and where they don't within the campus. The main features of this grid, as they emerge, are principal north-south and east-west axes, and you can see that emerging by way of the Market-Jefferson pair that extends out Glendale Boulevard and Washington East that provides east-west continuity to the river, a north-south pair that's really made up of the Dodge-Governor-Kia-Cock system that crosses Highway 6 and connects the south part of the city north, and then finally, the Melrose and Benton Street corridors on the west bank of the river. We have as well a peripheral or circumferential route that makes use of Mormon Track, the McAllister Extension, and ultimately Scott Boulevard to provide a loop around the city, and the grid fits within that system. So it provides a really rather elegant overall network of bikeways at ultimate build-out. In this map, we have now taken each segment of that network and applied infrastructure types to those. So you'll see that the solid lines are existing infrastructure, primarily existing trails, but in a couple of cases, existing bike lanes. The dashed white lines are the things that we need to work on, are the proposed elements. There are some features that are longer term, and so a shorter-term corridor can satisfy some of that need. So for example, a street like Rochester, which has a segment that occupied a good deal of attention at the second open house, specifically from First Avenue to Seventh Avenue, is really too narrow right now to provide bike lanes, even though it's a very high-desired route. But at least for the time being, a priority route like the Washington-Glendale-Jefferson sequence kind of goes in the same place and provides some of that same access. Similarly, the Courthill Trail combined with some of the bicycle boulevards provides us with that kind of continuity. So there are some easier, less expensive routes that can operate in the short term to provide the network connections that we want, even though they're not necessarily the ultimate build-out of the system. The proposed infrastructure includes two sets of protected or buffered bike lanes, which is a very exciting thing, and the type of infrastructure facility that generated the most positive responses in our surveying. We have enough room on the Market-Jefferson pair and on the Governor-Dodge pair to provide a one-way bike lane along with the one-way circulation streets with a buffer, so that we can actually use the existing width and provide a higher-order facility. As we move down the system, we come to the bicycle boulevards again, which are depicted in the magenta color, that involve minor modifications to secondary streets that offer good continuity, things like making sure the stop signs are turned in the right direction, or that there's a protected crossing where a bicycle boulevard crosses an arterial street. So we move on down the range of investments in terms of overall cost and in terms of order of implementation that Kevin will talk about just a little bit later in the presentation. You can see as well that, again, much of the trail system is in place. There are a few connections or extensions of that that would be provided in the network, but by and large, 80% of the ultimate trail system exists, and that's a great thing, either in the form of existing trails that are on exclusive right-of-way or side paths along major street corridors. So when we come down to it, we aren't very far from being able to use these resources to realize the overall system within a reasonable period of time. Finally, there are some corridors, Rochester being an example of this, Park Street, another example, where the facility that's in place, the roadway that's in place, makes sense from a network point of view, but really can't be realized until there's an ultimate reconstruction of that street. So some of these streets will be realized as complete streets, or proposed to be realized as complete streets, when needed reconstruction of narrow, existing roadway facilities happens, and when that's done, then the plan is a guidance to -- guides the design of those ultimate streets. So that in a nutshell is how the trail developed, what its coverage is, how the different types of infrastructure apply to that network system. And Kevin's going to take us home now.
So when we tally up the numbers for those different types of facilities that Marty showed in our second map, we're looking at close to about 28, 29 miles of additional side paths and shared-use paths, and over 70 miles of on-street bikeways, ranging from dedicated bicycle lanes to bicycle boulevards and smaller connecting routes that just use signage or simple shared lane markings. In addition to the infrastructure itself, there's a number of supporting systems that help make that bike network more functional. We think about things like bicycle wayfinding, where there's some in place already. That wayfinding helps direct bicyclists to key community destinations. In the case of the Courthill Trail, not only does that include distance markers, but also travel time to reach certain destinations, which helps dispel the myths that destinations might be too far or take too long to get to. Bicycle parking is referenced in the plan as a supporting element. The city's done well recently to review the city's zoning code with respect to bicycle parking, and we're looking at some of those recommendations and furthering those in the plan. Bike Share, which is just around the corner for Iowa City in 2018, and then ensuring that bicycle systems and transit systems are well-integrated through bike racks on buses, secure bike parking at transit stops and centers, and bicycle facility design for those corridors in which buses and bicycles are sharing the road. Our program and policy recommendations, they run the gamut across those six goals that we've talked about, and include some key elements that not only are we looking at independently, but have also been referenced in the city's 2013 Bicycle Friendly Community application feedback from the League of American Bicyclists. Some of those recommendations include creating a bicycle coordinator position, which either can be cultivated from an existing staff or created a new staff position altogether, creating a bicycle advisory committee that meets on a regular basis, which could be an outgrowth of our existing advisory committees that have helped with this project. We also look at some of those bike training courses. Public education campaigns, like I mentioned, was a key hot topic at our second public meeting, and other programs that really just increase accessibility for bicycling and help people become more confident, skilled, and ready to choose bicycling as a means of transportation. So when we talk about implementing the plan itself, we've looked at a few immediate actions that can help the city achieve that Gold Level Bicycle Friendly Community designation that's identified in the city council's strategic plan. First and foremost, we think adopting the plan by resolution or other means is an expression of the city's desire to continue moving forward towards Our program and policy recommendations, they run the gamut across those six goals that we've talked about, and include some key elements that not only are we looking at independently, but have also been referenced in the city's 2013 Bicycle Friendly Community application feedback from the League of American Bicyclists. Some of those recommendations include creating a bicycle coordinator position, which either can be cultivated from an existing staff or create a new staff position altogether, creating a bicycle advisory committee that meets on a regular basis, which could be an outgrowth of our existing advisory committees that have helped with this project. We also look at some of those bike training courses. Public education campaigns, like I mentioned, was a key hot topic at our second public meeting. And other programs that really just increase accessibility for bicycling and help people become more confident, skilled, and ready to choose bicycling as a means of transportation. So when we talk about implementing the plan itself, we've looked at a few immediate actions that can help the city achieve that gold-level bicycle-friendly community designation that's identified in the City Council's strategic plan. First and foremost, we think adopting the plan by resolution or other means is an expression of the city's desire to continue moving forward towards creating that bicycle-friendly community, establishing the bicycle advisory committee, creating a bicycle coordinator position, tackling some of the immediate-term bikeway projects, which I'll talk about here in a second. Some of those are already programmed, others would, are unfunded projects that could have a strong impact and create some continuity between the planning process and implementation. And then we look at collecting some performance measure, baseline counts for whether it's bicycling activity in the region or other metrics like percent of bicycle commuters and other elements that will actually be gathered when the city applies for that bicycle-friendly community designation, which is due in mid-August. So we've taken the entire bicycle network that Marty covered and have assigned value to each segment in that system based on our community input. These six terms that we're showing in the table have been quantified and assigned to each corridor based on their ability to meet those criteria. So we look at gap closure, safety, demographic equity, connections to existing facilities, connections to nearby parks and schools, and then the facility type itself. If it's something that's all ages, all abilities, a more comfortable facility like a trail, it can have a greater impact on bicycling activity in the area. So when we run our GIS-based model to determine project prioritization, you'll see the high-priority projects identified in red, medium-priority projects in orange, and low-priority projects in yellow. And the gray outlines show our existing bikeways. So it's important to remember, though, that we've differentiated for this project between project prioritization and project phasing itself. So I'm going to quickly flip to the phasing strategy. Our prioritization process is really focused on a data-driven model to help us see the value in all these projects. As for phasing individual projects over a 10-year period, we can't target specifically all the high-priority corridors at once. We want to make sure that we're still making headway and keeping in mind other important implementation factors like project cost, project opportunities, and building on some of the programmed projects that are already in the capital improvements plan. So as you see on this map here, the darkest purple lines are our immediate-phase projects to be completed in the next couple of years. Some of those projects, like Clinton and Madison, are already programmed and will be coming regardless. Other projects, like Camp Cardinal, where we already have striped shoulders, adding bicycle lane markings and bike lane signage creates a low-cost project to increase visibility for bicycling along that corridor. In terms of expanding to other areas within the community, we want some distribution of projects in that immediate phase, so the impact of this plan can be felt by residents across the city. We have a key principal bikeway corridor in Lakeside and Kia Cuck and Taylor that would increase connectivity in south of Highway 6. And we're also looking at a corridor like College, which is an east-west connector connecting the Central District to East Iowa City, and again, would be one of those low-cost projects where traffic calming elements have already been installed to really create a more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly environment. So that first immediate term, 2017-2018, has about 12.4 miles of projects, about 786,000 of which are unfunded. The near term, looking out five years, there's an additional almost 25 miles of projects. In our long term, out 10 years, so 2023 to 2027, there's an additional 44 miles. And then we also have identified some unscheduled projects that really represent that full build-out of the network, but at this point are likely to be developed as opportunities arise and are a little bit further down the line. Most of those are low-priority projects that add value to the network only when other elements have been constructed. So when we look at our cost estimates for building out this network, what we focused on are the unfunded projects that either A, aren't already in the capital improvements plan, or B, are not, cannot be realized through future roadway reconstruction. So those projects on arterial roads that will likely be reconstructed or widened, think Taft, for example, on the east side of town, those projects, when that road's rebuilt to the city's standard, it will include bike lanes and include a side path. So those elements will be constructed per city standards. So these projects that we've identified cover about 66 miles at a total of about $14.5 million. And of course, along with that construction cost, there's also maintenance costs. And as that network grows, those maintenance costs increase. It'll be really necessary to make sure that the facilities that are built can also be maintained, so making sure the staffing and budget is in place to support the maintenance of those facilities for the long term. When we look at funding sources for those projects, our standard federal and state funding sources have been tapped for bicycle projects all across the state of Iowa and represent significant opportunities. The Surface Transportation Program, Transportation Alternatives Program, these are fairly common, not just for bicycle projects, but for roadway projects in general that the city often uses, particularly for those roads that are functionally classified, those arterials and collector roadways. Local funding sources might include capital improvement set-asides, and the city already has in the budget funding for complete streets projects, funding for traffic calming. That funding can either be used specifically for projects or as local match to maximize local funding sources as leverage for external funding. And then private funding sources like community foundations or private and corporate donations can really help grease the wheels as this network is being developed and also fund some of those programming elements, which often aren't covered through typical transportation funding sources. I think it's important to keep in mind that most of the costs that we've identified in the plan relate to infrastructure. Some of the programming elements are going to require additional funds, too. Some may be undertaken by the city, but community partners are already implementing some of those programs and may bear some of that cost as well. When we talk about maintenance on operations in the plan, there's two basic types that we refer to, both routine maintenance, which covers your sweeping, your snow removal, and your remedial maintenance, which is focused more on major improvements, resurfacing, restriping, bridge replacement on a trail project. So those are your bigger-ticket items. But what we've done is take a look at the average annual cost of maintenance for different facility types recommended in the plan. And again, just to stress the importance of maintenance in maintaining a safe, connected network, it requires the resources from city's street staff and park staff to make sure that those facilities are in good working order. The final element included in the implementation plan is really monitoring evaluation and making sure that we're moving forward with this plan, tracking our progress, and we've identified key metrics that are in the League of American Bicyclists Bicycle Friendly Community application to help guide the city in tracking progress. So ridership as a percentage of commuting. We've looked at bicycle network as a percentage of the roadway network, arterial streets with bike lanes, and so forth down the list. So we believe that these recommendations included in the plan can really bring Iowa City to a gold-level bicycle-friendly community standard. And further out, we think that, you know, the city will be well on its way to platinum if these recommendations are carried through for the long term. I feel like the commitment we've seen from city staff and from the community during this process has been really encouraging and will take the city in the right direction. So with that, I would like to open it up for any questions.
Kevin and Marty, thanks so much for such a clear presentation, and thanks to the staff for working so diligently with the consultants and the technical, well, not the technical, the community advisory committee. You know, we all know you, you're out there. Thanks for working so hard on this as well. It seems to me you've put together a pretty impressive plan. I'd say very impressive plan. It's also pretty long and pretty complicated. I tried to read it yesterday, and I think I probably literally read about a third of it, but had to give up. But I did skim through the rest of it, so it's a very impressive piece of work, so congratulations to you all for doing that. But I'm sure there are questions, so let's see what kind of questions are at play.
I would like to focus in on Gilbert. Were we going to hear a separate presentation? There was indicated that there was further study. What are the variables that you believe require further study?
Right, and we've got a separate couple-minute presentation to talk about.
Yeah, let's hold off on that for a minute.
Okay.
What is the percentage of bike riders in the city total? Just, I don't know how you get that figured completely.
Well, that data's measured through the American Community Survey from the U.S. Census Bureau, so it only looks at bicycle commuting to work for adults 16 and over. And it's been hovering for Iowa City between 3.5% and 4% for about the last eight years. And I think we're at about 3.7% or 8% at this point right now.
Okay. The fundamental purpose of the plan is to make bicycling much more attractive, is it not, to make bicycling much more attractive to the, I don't know, 60 or more percent of people who would like to bicycle but don't right now feel it's safe enough or that they know the network well enough to be able to travel around easily. That's the way I understood it.
Right, it is. And we think there's some key recommendations to get the city moving early in that direction. And we followed the lead of the community as we've put this network together and prioritized and phased these projects. And you'll see that we've identified some short-term projects that do address gaps in the network and help create some continuity, so people in one part of town might be able to travel, not just within their neighborhood, but across some of those major roadways like a Highway 6 or Highway 1, that present just as much of a barrier as the Iowa River or the railroad tracks do with regards to bicycle travel.
In terms of commuting, percentage of commuters, what would you think would be a reasonable goal for us to shoot for? I think right now you indicated 3% to 4%. How high do you think we can get? And I think the second related question to that is what piece of physical infrastructure do you feel would most quickly put us on that path to increasing the commuters that we have in our community?
Well, the League of American Bicyclists ideal benchmark for a gold-level bicycle-friendly community is about 5.5% bicycle commuters. It's important to keep in mind that the league is flexible with regards to their ratings, and they don't require a community to hit every single category. But I think that's achievable for Iowa City, and maybe even a few percentage points higher. But there aren't many communities, larger communities than Iowa City, that are getting into that 5.5% range. I think one of the benefits is the character of the community, not just from a land-use perspective, but demographically, with a large percentage of college students and the short distances between a lot of residences and employment centers in the city, there's opportunity. I think developing on-street facilities in the form of those dedicated bike lanes are going to really have an impact on bicycle commuting patterns. As Marty pointed out, those recommendations for Market and Jefferson and Governor and Dodge in the form of buffered bike lanes, which are basically your standard bicycle lanes you see now, but with a little bit of added separation in the form of an extra stripe, adding about 18 to 24 inches of width, provide greater separation from bicyclists and motor vehicles, create an extra level of comfort. We're seeing a lot of demand for that in Iowa City through our survey results, through our open houses, and we think those key corridors can really help facilitate that mode shift, I think, that we're looking for.
I just have a question on safety education, not only for bicycles, but for autos. You know, it used to be, driver's ed was taught in the schools, now it's all private. How do we get to these private organizations to teach them about how, you know, sharing the road and, you know, distances that you should go around a bicycle, as well as teaching bicyclists to stop at stop signs? I mean, it's become an issue, and it's kind of a problem. We just put stop signs in downtown. I happen to be located right there, and I watch 90% of the bikes do not stop. And it's kind of a safety issue for pedestrians and drivers and bicycles. So I guess where does the education fall that we can get a little better?
Right, right. And I think it's important, and you've touched on this, is that it really requires a multi-pronged approach, and we can't just target one roadway user group. One thing that even came up a lot during the planning process was the need for increasing awareness of bicyclists that are using sidewalks in the downtown area, potentially increasing conflict with pedestrians, especially on busier corridors. So there's a need to really, to reach all these target audiences, and through public education campaigns, there's a lot of communities that have tackled this through targeted education for motorists, bicyclists, pedestrians. It might be in the form of ad strips on buses, at bus shelters, on Facebook, through Facebook, a Facebook campaign or a Facebook page. There's a lot of different ways we can reach out and target people in the community and kind of raise that level of awareness that we're all using the same roads, we're all trying to get somewhere, let's show a little respect. You know, you take those kinds of messages and you churn them through a proper marketing firm, and they can really make that whiz and pop better than I can. But I think it's that targeted messaging that's going to have an impact.
Would that go through, like, the bicycle coordinator that you're talking about, too, that could spearhead that?
Right, having a single point of contact at City Hall to be the conduit for bicycle questions, bicycle-related efforts. You know, when we recommend in the plan that there be a bicycle coordinator position, we're not saying that now that person's responsible for everything bikes-related, let's dump it on their plate. What we're trying to focus on is having that person be kind of the point person, whether it's for the community at large or organizing the city's efforts internally. So, you know, that's a...
Thank you. I think we've just noticed the weather's turned a little bit bad.
I thought I heard that.
Bicycle sounds...
Oh, we're high up here.
So I have two questions and maybe one statement. Can you go back to that scoring metric that you showed before? While you're doing that, I guess the two questions I have is kind of going back to Rocky's question as far as, you know, what is the goal? I mean, obviously, from a gold-level standard, you're talking about getting that 5.5%, but then, you know, looking at your funding or unfunded projects, I mean, it's like $14 million, This is more of a comment, maybe not a statement to you. I mean, I think that we, if we're going to be committing that type of funding, I think we need to have some serious conversations about that goal. And so if we're talking about, kind of to Rocky's point, we want 22% or 20% ridership. Obviously, the goal standard's a good standard, but I think that we need to think about how that incorporates with all of our other transportation discussions and some of those things, because I think it's a good thing. I think it's, you know, something that I would be proud to say that we're, you know, doing that in that particular way. But, you know, I think that you mentioned that some of the goals moving forward or steps moving forward as far as, you know, if you're going to have, we're talking about, and I was just thinking up through the presentation, we're talking about a goal that we would like to see as far as how we make it more accessible, so we have individuals accessing that may not necessarily access it before and provide different amenities for individuals doing it now. But I don't want a number to that. I don't want to measure it. I don't want just to think that we're doing it and providing this without kind of looking at it. Some of that baseline data, I think, is there, but I just want us to think about that as we're thinking about committing resources, what that means. I think it's a good thing, but I just want to make sure that we're measuring some particular way. What I wanted to say within the safety piece is how safety is defined. So it says degree to which the corridor increases safety along streets with bicycle-related crashes from the last five years. Because when I've been talking to some folks that, you know, I don't know if they're avid bicyclists, they just have a bicycle in there, you know... bicyclists, they just have a bicycle in their, you know, yard, and I just kind of differentiate from those that have, like, you know, a little compartment on their car, and I'm like, oh, maybe they're really serious type of thing. But they were talking about still thinking that the access currently, even those dedicated bike lanes, are still not safe. And so, I mean, from a transportation standpoint, maybe that's a speed limit concern, or, I mean, when we're talking about, when you go back to the miles that you are, the miles of, yeah, buffered bike lanes compared to regular bike lanes, we may need to talk about whether or not that needs to be increased more from four miles. It's just something I was thinking about, because I think that for many folks, even those folks that seem to be the avid bicyclists, you know, bike lanes, even though they're dedicated, still don't seem safe enough. And I mean, even though I'm probably maybe only the one person that's still not on the one...
We're going to go bicycling one of these days.
Well, on the one-lane piece, I still think, you know, that's tight. I mean, that's tight for me as a driver, and I definitely think from the concerns I was hearing, as tight as a bicyclist. And so thinking about that, I think, is important. The last thing is, when we were talking about unfunded projects or overall cost of the project, I felt like we were missing some of the funding pieces, and maybe I missed this in the draft, but the funding pieces around the positions and everything else. And so it said next steps. One was a creation of a, right there, go back, creation of a coordinator position. I mean, what is the actual cost for that? I mean, that would just be something that I'd want to know.
Sure. And when we talk about a full-time staff to take that position, in some instances, local agencies have created an equivalent full-time staff by identifying, you know, quarter time for, you know, somebody in planning, quarter time for somebody in parks. It's a way to create that full-time coordinator position, but ultimately, a most effective route would be a single person. So, yeah, you know, another staff person, if it's hired externally, you know, maybe 40,000 to 60,000, whatever, would be commensurate with current city salaries.
Going back to that safety piece, though, what about, I mean, when you define degree of safety, or do we have a definition? Because, again, I feel like that's one that is a little, I don't, I think that people I was talking to just had a different feeling about what safety meant.
Right. When we look at, let's see if I can find our slide. When we look at those corridors, for us, it was about focusing on high-crash corridors and the ability of dedicated facilities to address some of the conflicts that are present on those corridors by providing dedicated space. So through the provision of those facilities, you're in effect helping to regulate behavior. And where that's most important is in the details of intersection design. It's where our bicycle facilities cross major roadways that you have the greatest amount of conflict, similar to, you know, most of your traffic crashes are happening at intersections rather than tail-end fender benders. So a lot of the devil's in the details, I think, with regard to facility design, but we've identified what those resources are to guide the facility development as these bikeways are developed, and really focusing on those high-crash corridors. So it was less about specific measures and more about ensuring that where we know there to be large clusters of crashes, like Gilbert and Court Street, for example, is a high-crash area, for a number of reasons, which might even include some of those unexpected crossings without waiting for signals. By creating that space and encouraging bicyclists to be part of traffic through following the rules and regulations that are identified through markings, signage, and even bicycle signals, we can help create a safer environment and regulate activity in a way that everyone kind of feels like they have a place on the road.
Kevin, before you leave that particular slide, I'd like to draw attention to the emphasis on equity that appears in the slide. And also, somewhere else in the report, you refer to the League of Bicyclists, can't remember the full name, and about the six E's. Engineering, et cetera, enforcement, education.
Right.
But you actually added one, and the one that you added is equity, if I understand correctly. And I think that's really important to see, because, you know, inclusivity and justice are key elements of what our overall strategic plan calls for. And I know Kingsley and everybody else up here would very much like us to make sure that whatever we do to our bike system really enables people who are lower-income or otherwise typically don't use bicycles to be able to, as much as any other person in this city, and people who are disabled for one reason or another, yeah.
Yeah, and that's been something we really wanted to focus on. A lot of times, equity is included as a general principle, but we felt it important to include as a specific goal. And we do have, not just in network prioritization through the League of American Bicyclists' Bicycle Equity Index, which is another model we've used based on census block demographic information to help us prioritize the network. We've also included that in our program recommendations, really focusing on increasing access to bicycling as a means for diversifying the transportation system and helping people get to the places they need to go.
With your junior high survey, you said the kids you surveyed, they all have bikes, but very few of them ride them to school. Did they give a reason, did you ask them why that was so?
I don't think we got the motivations behind why it was that they're not bicycling as much as they do. Sarah, were there questions on our survey related to issues that prevent them from bicycling?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you'd like to speak a little bit to the...
In the case of Southeast Junior High, there are a number of kids that go to Southeast that come from a great distance, that come from across the river. So in that case, it's too far. There were also situations where the weather was an issue, or just timing, like the amount of time that they had to go to school, and then, of course, the parents. And so one of the things that we talked about earlier is maybe in the future, it was great to have the relationship with the school district that we could do this, and as you know, we also interviewed surveyed kids as part of the Long Range Transportation Plan for the MPO. But we'd maybe like to go back in a year or so, and if possible, repeat the survey, and then also ask parents' questions to see if the parents' perceptions are matching up with the kids, because sometimes parents' perceptions of safety are different than children's, or parents' perception of distance or how to get to a place are different from what kids are, and see if we can figure out sort of pathways to make it easier for kids to ride.
Another thought I was having was, through this process, were any projects looked at as signature projects? I'm really interested in seeing, especially as we try, move forward with implementation, of having work that really is kind of the talk of the town, at least among those of us who are interested in this sort of thing. I want Kingsley, you know, to come on board with this whole concept, and I think we need, personally, I think we need projects that really shout out what we're trying to do.
Right, right. I think there's a few that come to mind that will have that wow factor that you might be referencing, and the buffered bike lanes on Governor and Dodge, I think, will really have an impact, as will those on Market and Jefferson. So they'd replace the existing bike lanes that are down there. During the course of the planning process, there were some issues that were raised about those existing bike lanes, which are on the left side of the road, as you know, and a little different from most, from every other bike lane in the city, but they have value in terms of what they bring to the network. And we think by rolling out buffered bike lanes on those corridors, it's going to bring something to the area that Iowa City doesn't have on the ground yet, but represents a significant step in the right direction. The other facilities that are unique, but not, they may not feel that different right off the bat, are going to be some of those bicycle boulevards. So on a street-like college where it's already been improved through traffic calming elements like medians or roundabouts, things that help slow traffic or divert traffic to other streets altogether, by combining that with signage, shared lane markings, wayfinding signage that's really going to help people see, hey, this is a valuable link to help me get from my neighborhood to City Hall. We want to highlight the destinations through facilities like that. So I think the wayfinding element that's on those bicycle boulevards and just through the whole network in general is really going to inform people. It may not have that same captivating effect that a dedicated buffered bike lane or even a cycle track, something that really captures somebody's attention, somebody's attention. But as far as impact on the network, wayfinding's really going to help move people very functionally.
Hey, John, I can imagine a ribbon-cutting and council ride on one of those buffered roads, maybe both of them, led by Kingsley. That'd be really fun.
I'm pretty fast on that.
What about on Dodge and Governor, that State Highway 1? We have to work with them to get approval to do buffered bike lanes on there?
Yes, we would, and we've already, our staff's been having those conversations. Governor's going to be overlaid next year, and we're working to incorporate that in to those, post-resurfacing, to restripe at that time.
Would that have an effect of slowing traffic down a little bit, too? Because you're going to narrow those lanes a little bit?
Sure, absolutely.
Because it's sometimes, coming down that hill on Dodge Street, it's 35...
That's the point, that's what we want.
Forty-five is coming.
Well, that's what I mean, slow it down by narrowing it.
Not on the icy mornings.
Yep.
Well, I myself was very impressed with all the information. As Jim said, it was kind of overwhelming, first because I think it's over 100 pages of our packet was the bicycle information. And I'm impressed that you want to increase the commuter population, but we have a very active biking-friendly community, and I was really impressed last year when we got the Cycle Across event. And I think, is part of the plan going to be to promote those kinds of things, like the Jingle Cross and the Cycle Cross? Because that's a big deal, that Iowa City was selected for that.
It is, it is. And it's, like you said, it's not just about increasing commuters, it's the whole culture of bicycling. And one of the recommendations we have in the program section is to undertake an economic impact evaluation of events like those and other economic impacts of bicycling on the community as a whole, so we can see what that return is on investment in big events, on infrastructure. And that economic impact translates, not just to the way bicyclists spend dollars at local stores compared to motor vehicle occupants, but it also translates in terms of health, improved health impacts, reduced healthcare costs, reduced transportation costs and fuel consumption. There's a lot of different little variables that can be examined to show that when we increase bicycle infrastructure and in turn bicycling activity, we can generate a positive return economically. And through those kinds of reports, we can really help bring others in and share that enthusiasm that we have for making bicycling a bigger part of the community.
Other questions?
Were you able to quantify the carbon reduction per percentage extra of commuters? So like, for example, if we get, you know, each additional percentage, or is that sort of outside the scope of this particular project?
Yeah, it is, it is, but it's something that...
But it's significant, you'd at least be able to say that, yeah, okay.
I'm not hearing any more questions. Well done, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Marty, thank you for your good work, and to everyone else who contributed to this particular plan. So it's only a draft, are you going to revise it a little bit? I don't know exactly how, and then come back to us.
There may be small revisions, but I think what you see is pretty much what you get. And we will return to you perhaps as early as your next meeting to ask you to adopt it by resolution.
One quick comment, I forgot, and it came up with the MPO presentations. I, as many other people, suffer from colorblindness or color deficiency. And so with mapping, and I think I'm, most colorblind people are colorblind with red and green, as opposed to blue and yellow. So if your mapping uses the red and green color range, it can be virtually illegible to someone with color deficiency. So if you could tweak the color range, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, that's something we can fix. Thank you.
All right. Okay, on to Gilbert Street.
My name's Paul Wojciechowski, I'm principal with Alt Plain Design. I work with Kevin. And I'll do a short report on Gilbert Street, but before I go there, a level of travel stress is another factor that you look at with bikeway design. So everybody's got a different level of travel stress, but depending on speeds, on streets, traffic volumes, it depends, what you apply to that, the bikeway type, can make people feel more comfortable. So that's a safety indicator on how safe I feel on a street. So the discussion earlier, I want to jump up, and I got excited with that, but a lot of times, you know, higher-speed streets, more separation, is going to be more comfortable for most people. So getting that buffer on the higher-volume, higher-speed streets. But then, the bike boulevards are usually on streets that are less than 3,000 cars a day, so you don't need much to make those safer, you need that traffic calming. So low-speed, low-volume streets are usually what everybody feels comfortable with. So what I feel comfortable with is different than, I always use my wife as an example, we've got totally, we're on these ends of the spectrum. I can ride anywhere, and she wants that buffered, separated facility. So that's a good indication, and everybody's a little different, so, but you can get that mode shift by providing those more comfortable-type facilities. So on to Gilbert Street. So we kind of started, we did a lot of data collection, the city did a lot of data collection for us. We started looking at, and I always call it a three-step process when we look at travel way reallocation. I don't like using the term road diet or anything, but space reallocation, if there's issues in the corridor that you want to address, you start looking at traffic volumes, and that's really what we concentrate on so far on Gilbert Street. So when I mentioned three-step process, this process, if you just look at traffic volumes, there's three steps. We've got three steps in this process, too. One is just existing and future condition analysis as it exists today. So the configuration that's out there now, how's traffic moving through there? There's shared lane markings on the street, usually on shared lane markings on a street that's got higher traffic volumes, only somebody like me would ride down the middle of it, which I have recently. I rode down Gilbert Street, and I'm okay with it, most people are not. So we looked at it, how it is now, so that's the first step, is to assess, is it a candidate for thinking about doing something? The second step is going to be, okay, what options do we have? What are we trying to, what problems are we trying to solve? And then developing that, how are we going to evaluate it? So defining all that stuff is like step two. We're not there yet, we're still in step one. And then, step three would be, okay, what's an action plan? What's a final recommendation, and what we want to do with it? So the existing Gilbert Street four-lane minor arterial road, some places have turned lanes to it. It's got a range of 5,800 cars a day to 17,000 cars a day. So that's a pretty wide variety, kind of bulges up around Highway 6 there, so that's where the bulge occurs and the heavy traffic occurs. There's shared lane markings out there, it's a traffic corridor, it's got several lines that kind of run through it, so it's probably got about four different transit lines that kind of make its way onto Gilbert Street, in and out. There's about five to six transit stops along Gilbert Street. So in our evaluation, and so initially, with just looking at the numbers, the ADT numbers, that's step one of my traffic volume assessment process, is it a candidate? Well, with those numbers, it's a candidate, so that leads you to look a little further. And we did look a little, we looked a lot further with a traffic model simulator analysis, so we used... So we used CINGRO to look at how traffic operates at intersections. So we looked to see what kind of delays occur at intersections, to see, is there anything that stand out to us with traffic operations as they exist? So if you start seeing on Gilbert Street, if you saw some Es and Fs on approaches, and that's looking at traffic approaches, so straight movements or turning movements, if there's some really poor levels of service or excessive delays, that's a red flag that there's a problem with it. We didn't really see any red flags on Gilbert Street, on some side streets. We saw some lower, a lot of delays on some side streets. But any kind of change to Gilbert Street really wouldn't, that wouldn't impact that. You'd have to consider it. But we didn't see any alarming notes. And this is just a diagram that shows, we looked at all the signalized intersections, which there's nine of them, and then we looked at non-signalized intersections also. So there's different ways you look at each of those, but we assessed both of those types of intersections.
Paul, before you go off that, can you go back to that, please? It kind of looks like cuneiform, looking inside the black circles. Can you translate a little bit for us?
Yeah. What those are is, there's, you can see the traffic signals on the one circles, and those are just turning movements. There are arrows that show what type of movements occur on that approach. So it could be a through movement, a left turn, a right turn. You may just have a left and right turn out of an intersection. That's just showing the directions of how you can operate through that intersection in each of the movements. It really, I try to keep it clean, so the numbers are on the next sheet. This just shows what's going on at each of those intersections, what kind of movements occur. And the little red dots on some of these indicate a stop-controlled intersection, side street stops for Gilbert. And then the ones with the little traffic signal just show it's a signalized intersection. So we had nine of those, and then the rest of them were stop-controlled intersections from the side streets. The little boxes underneath that, which you can't read, that's on the next sheet, that actually shows what the delays occur at those approaches. And we looked at each approach. You can look at an intersection and say, well, that's really bad operational. I like to look at approaches. You know, the left turns, how are those operating? How are the through movements operating? How are the right turns operating? That kind of gets down into, okay, how's everything working in that intersection? Where am I going to have problems? Or where are the problems occurring? So it really defines, traffic engineers use that to define, you know, what issues you have operationally for motor vehicles. We know that the bikes, it's got the volumes there, and there's a lot of intersections. And shared lane markings, most people may not want to ride there, but some may. So we didn't really do an operational analysis on that. But if we had to look at a bicycle level of travel stress, like I mentioned before, it would probably be in a really bad range for people, you know, wanting to ride their bikes there. Most people probably wouldn't want to. So we looked at each of those intersections and each of the approaches, and we, in summary, and we've got a whole memo that looks at the existing conditions analysis. We found four intersections. Most intersections operate at level of service D or better. And D is, usually E is acceptable in a more urbanized, built-up area. Anything above D is not bad. And we only found four intersections that have an approach that has a level of service D on them. Everything is better than D, which means C or, you know, on a grade card, A is really good, no problems at all. B is really good, C is really good. D is starting to get a little, you may have to, a couple lines of cars, there may be some queuing at intersections, so it's getting a little worse. F is kind of failure of an intersection. So you're not getting through on a traffic signal. You're having to wait a couple signals. That's what kind of an F or an E is, as far as, just think of the grade, your grade book. You don't want Fs. You don't want Es. You don't really want, Ds are okay, you're going to pass, but it's not exceptional. So we only found that those four intersections had level of service Ds on Gilbert itself. There's a couple intersections that had a level of service E on a westbound direction, and I believe that was Burlington Street. And I think Prentice Street Bowery had level of service Es in a westbound direction at one of the approaches. So not really anything alarming at this point. So the next step was going to be looking at the future 2045 traffic volumes to see what happens when we add growth rates that we got from the city to grow that traffic and see, okay, what happens to the intersections when you apply those future numbers in 2045, those 2045 numbers. So some considerations when you even think about space reallocation on a street, you know, are you going to improve safety? And for who? Is it, you know, for cars, bikes, Peds? And we did get some indications that there's a lot of people just crossing the street, pedestrians crossing the street, especially as you get up towards the north, that, you know, there could be improvements for pedestrians. Are speeds, do speeds need to be reduced? Are there speeding issues? That's something you would target. Side street delays, so right now there's some side street delays, so a four-lane section, if you're trying to wait on the side street and coming out, you may get a poor level of service on that side street. So there's going to be, you may have to wait a while to get on the street. Maybe some space reallocation on the roadway could help that out, help that level of service for that side street out and getting out on the roadway. Pedestrian bicycles facility enhancements, and then overall quality and livability enhancements. Those are all benefits that we would look at. So I just got a couple things, items there that I noticed when we looked at our traffic study. Reducing travel streets' speeds probably going to be desirable in the north side of the corridor, in the downtown area, because there's a lot of pedestrians and high volumes of pedestrians. So lower speeds means lower, more comfortable for pedestrians as well as bicyclists. Iowa City has approximately 1,200 bike commuters in a population of 70,000 people. So there's a fair amount of commuters. A lot better than where I come, you know, in St. Louis. We don't have that, we don't have the kind of mode share that you have, which is exceptional. So we would look for, you know, there's a lot of people riding their bikes for transportation, and that could help that group of people. So the next step is to finish up that 2045 analysis, and then if the city chooses to do so, we would move into phase two. But we've actually set this up so we're not moving into another step until everybody's comfortable. And we would do a lot more of the engagement in step two. So it's really up to the city to say, well, we want to go to step two. And then even if we get into step two, it's still your decision to say, okay, we want to go to step three or not. So it's, we've kind of put this together to step this through at your recommendation on taking the next step.
How long will step two take?
Well, it would probably take about a month, I would say, once we get going like that, or faster. We can move pretty fast once we get the go-ahead, but we want to make sure that everybody's comfortable when we get into that step, and then we can move through that pretty fast. Ideally, we would have had this done by the time we were here today, but it didn't work out that way.
Are there any concerns from a staff level about authorizing them to proceed with this next step?
Well, I can't say that I personally have seen the analysis before tonight, so I, maybe Kent can speak to it. I don't know if the public works staff has had a whole lot of conversation. I guess what I'd say to the comment, though, is if we felt there was concern to move forward to a second phase, we would bring that to you. I mean, that would be, I'd look for you to make that decision. Otherwise, we're going to go forward.
Yeah, like Paul mentioned, I don't think we're quite there yet because the 2045 analysis isn't done. And what that shows, as Paul mentioned, you know, what's on the ground today isn't that alarming. But what we don't want to occur is if we go ahead and do a four-to-three lane conversion, in four years, we don't want the traffic to be such that we have to convert it back. You know, there's no use in doing that. So really, when we look at 2045 and we have those numbers, then we'll know what kind of project we're looking at in terms of how long it'll last and what kind of service we'll get from it. So really, we need to get the 2045 complete. I think Paul's nearly complete with that now. So I would say, you know, in the coming weeks, we'll have that information. We'll share it with the city manager's office, and clearly the engineering and public works offices need to review that as well. Then I think we can reconvene and figure out if we want to move into phase two. And as Paul mentioned, as part of the actual consultant agreement, we've actually made a clean line there, because if this doesn't work, there's no reason to move into the stakeholder meetings, the public engagement, and so forth, because we would be doing so for no reason, frankly.
And we haven't assumed anything with this. So if you look in, if you look at our books, at our project management software, we've only actually have step one that's actually in our system. Two and three is not there yet. So everybody said, well, what's that? I said, no, we're only putting in step one because we don't know if we're going to step two. So not your normal consultant kind of attitude, but, and we're not your normal consultant, right, Kevin? And your normal bikeway, bike planner, designer types, I've got a root in traffic management from being with the Missouri Department of Transportation. So I'm aware of how this operates. And at some point, I got the awareness of moving people in that car, so that's where the bikes and Peds come in. So I look at it from a holistic perspective to make sure the whole system works together and nothing fails. So we don't want transit to fail. We don't want cars, bikes, or Peds. We want them all working together seamlessly in the system.
Okay, good deal.
Thank you.
Jeff, if there are complications, come back to us, just like you said. Okay, we should probably move on.
Are we going to have an opportunity to comment on any of this, or will that be a separate work session?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut anybody off. Yeah.
Okay. I guess I had thought that about six months ago, we gave clear direction that we were going to go to a step three, unless I'm mistaken on that. And I think the other thing, too, is I think we have a philosophical issue here in terms of what are our values and what are our goals for transportation? I think ultimately, we have carbon mitigation goals. Obviously, the automobile is going to be a key part of our transportation on into 2045. But I think non-carbon modes of transportation are going to be absolutely essential to this. So at least I'm hearing that we can do a step-two analysis in 30 days. I would like to either have a separate work session on this topic so everyone can fully flesh this out, or at least authorize that step-two to occur today, because my recollection was, unless maybe we could check on the minutes, that we had already authorized certainly an engineering assessment, and Gilbert in particular, has been probably one of the most studied four-way, you know, road diets that we've talked about for years. And I go back to Jeff Speck, this whole concept of having to move it, you know, we might have to switch back. You know, one of the things that he teaches is the concept of induced demand. The more capacity, the wider you build, the more roadway we build, the more likely we're able to facilitate precisely the sorts of development that are going to place pressure on this. And I believe that to my core. And I think that the empirical data supports that in terms of DOT studies. So I guess what I would like to see is either tonight that we authorize step-two, so we can get this, I understand it can be done in 30 days, and then at that particular time, we can determine whether this could be adopted into the plan. Can we do that?
I think we've already said that they should proceed with the step-two unless Jeff comes back to us saying there's some big problem that had not been foreseen, or put in your own words, Jeff.
The scope reflects the ability to move to two and three. We don't need to come back to you for permission to go to phase two on this project. What we're saying is there's a certain checkpoint in the process, and if there's major red flags for staff and we don't feel comfortable going forward, we'll come back to you and say, this is the problem we see. Do you still want us to go forward? My guess, and it's only a guess at this point, is that we're going to slide right into phase two and we'll get that going. But you have already given us that authorization. Keep in mind, that authorization just came a few months ago, and this was an amendment to the Bicycle Master Plan in order to get us here. We're simply updating you tonight because we have the consultants in town, and we felt it was a good time to touch base with you and let you know where we stand.
Okay. Do we have an approximate timeframe, then? We have 30 days for step two. And do we have a time plan in terms of when it would come back before us, in terms of, essentially be modifying into the plan?
Yeah. Well, my hope, and Kent, come on up, my hope and our hope along with this is that we could be further, far enough along, excuse me, so that we have all the information we need heading into the capital budgeting process this fall, so that when we come to you in January, we can tell you exactly what the plan may be and give you a path forward, should you want to go through with it.
Yeah, no, I think that's fair. And just to be clear, we still need to do a little bit more work with the 2045 numbers, and I'd like to be able to share that with the city manager, public works, and engineer. But then, yeah, I think once we're happy with that, and I think we'll probably receive that in the coming weeks, then I think Paul's right that, you know, a 30-day process for that second portion is doable. So I think Jeff's 100% right. I think for budget discussions, we'll be easily ready to go.
Anything else?
Just quickly, I walked Gilbert. I had some car troubles that I had to bring the car down to, you know, a garage at the south end of Gilbert. So I was walking Gilbert Street just the other day to and from home. It is a horrible street. I mean, you know, we're grading, we're hearing the levels of service with respect to automobiles, but boy, walking that corridor is nasty. That is a nasty street. So I think we, in my mind, and I know we're focusing on the bike networking, but they're interrelated with pedestrian and vehicular movements. The other thing I looked at the other morning was, according to the information for the last three years of collisions on the Gilbert corridor, there have been almost 200 in the last three years. So I would say it's not only safe, not, it's, the perception of safety is an issue both, well, for pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers, in my view.
Okay. Thank you all. Let's move on, and we don't have a whole lot of time. We can take it the most till 20 till, I would think, on our work session. So the next item is clarification of agenda items.
I got a question on one of the correspondences from Harry Olmsted. He was asking about the additional cost on painting the buses. Where are we on that? Is that something we've--
Well, it is in one of the info packets. We have a memo to you, and I think Harry had a couple of the numbers transposed from that memo. So the short of it is, we have 11 buses that are in production right now. If we paint them, if we want to pursue a new color scheme, it's $4,000 approximately per bus during the manufacturing process. If we wait till aftermarket and we want to do something, and keep in mind, we're keeping buses for 20 years, about, right about now, that's the average life of our buses, you're probably looking at, and this is our best estimate without getting quote, is probably about 12,000 a bus. So the letter in the info packet was letting you know of staff's intention to pursue a new color scheme, but we have not given the green light to the manufacturer because we wanted to give you an opportunity tonight to steer us in a different direction, should you choose to.
I guess one question I had is, is the $4,000 a standard cost for changing any color scheme, or was it specific to that particular scheme?
Well, if you look at our color scheme now, there isn't much of a color scheme. It's a couple of stripes. And what is being proposed is certainly more elaborate. So I'm going to kind of glance over at Mark, but I think that's probably where the cost is coming from, is just a more elaborate scheme. Is that correct, Mark?
If I read that memo right, the plan then would be, on the older buses, we wouldn't do anything with those, just we would only, as we replace, every new replacement bus would have a new color scheme.
Yeah, you know, ideally, we would do our whole fleet at once, but there are some cost constraints, and there's a lot of demand on transit right now, so we want to be cognizant of that. As new buses go through, we would-- As, as new buses go through, we would adjust to the new paint scheme, and, you know, there may be other opportunities, too, and, you know, we do have accidents on occasion, so if there's major bodywork being done, maybe there's an opportunity to, to paint an aftermarket vehicle, but that's not our intention.
That's one item I was confused about, as far as, would you, first, it was a little unclear if the existing ones then would need to be repainted into the new scheme.
They don't have to be, again, I think it's, ideally, in a perfect world, yes, we would, so they would all have a consistent look, and, and there's a kinda a brand awareness and recognition, but we're just trying to balance that with some of the fiscal constraints within the Transit Fund. Right now, seats, you know, when you order a seats bus, you may get a Corribel bus to show up, you may get an Iowa City bus to show up, they've got two or probably three or four different paint schemes, and it's a little bit different, because it's point-to-point type of transit, but I think it would be okay if we had, for a transitionary period, two different color schemes. If it proves to be a problem, we can always adjust.
I wasn't so sure that we would need an elaborate color scheme on our buses, but that was a concern of mine, but, for the extra cost. Okay.
I just have a question on 3D6. What is the process now that the lowest bid came in and 39% over? Will it be scaled back, or...
Yeah, we kinda have to analyze those bids, that's Happy Hollow Park restroom and shelter replacement, not an ideal situation there, but we have to go back and analyze why we missed it, given that we had five bids, all considerably above what HBK estimated for us. Clearly, the estimate was the problem, and, and we just need to reconsider that. So, we, we need to do something specific to Happy Hollow, to get that project back on, on schedule, it's likely gonna be a spring installation now. More, more importantly, I guess, as important, we were using that design concept for the standard going forward, so if you took a, a sneak peek at the park's master plan, which you'll get a presentation on at your next meeting, you'll see that this is the design that's, that's called for with future park improvements, and that's simply too expensive for us to, to adopt as the standard. So, Julie and her design team are, are back at the drawing board, and need to find a solution for both Happy Hollow and then the standard going forward.
Yeah, I mean, I would be really curious, I know I brought up the issue, and we did one down, I think in Lower City Park, replaced one of our shelters down there, the cost of that. And, I mean, I know we've got some of the stonework, which is, you know, is really nice, and, and I think it really adds a lot to it, but when I look at these numbers, you're talking as much as a house costs. I mean, an inexpensive house, but I mean, 250-plus thousand dollars, and you're talking all the plumbing, all the foundation work. I mean, just, it just boggles my mind that something like a shelter and a one- or two-stall bathroom, even though it's got stonework around it, is coming in at the cost of a house. Just boggles my mind.
We do think that it's partially because of the bidding climate right now, that certainly doesn't account for, for it being as far up above as it is, but we do know that contractors are very busy...
Right.
And the tight timeline probably added to it. And we believe the shelter design is probably the part that was more expensive and overbudget than the restroom design, so we'll be going back and looking at all of those things. It being in a historic neighborhood added a little bit of cost to this one as well. We gotta kinda find that sweet spot, where it all works.
Yeah, but still, Susan's point is spot-on. How could it possibly be as expensive as a house?
But even, you know, for, just to give you an example, our restroom that we did at Fair Meadows was, was at the, or, or even Kiwanis Park.
They're both around 100,000.
Yeah, so if, if you've seen those, those are pretty, you know, bare-bones cinder block type of construction, and we're, we're north of 100 on, on just that, so...
Is it because they're bidding on government projects, or what? I mean...
No, I think that's, I think if...
The legitimate cost?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's legitimate.
Phew. Okay, thanks.
All right. I'd like to ask a question about Item 10, which has to do with American Legion Road and speed limits, et cetera. It's, it's not really a question, it's more than, more of an observation. I know we received, I don't know, at least one email, but representing more people about that, and I just wanna just state something that all of us know. It's extremely important that we ensure the safety of kids and escorts who want to cross the street and the major road, or walk along the major road. It's fundamental, and I know staff is gonna make sure that happens, and I'm glad, Jeff, you wrote that memo to Steve Merly about that. So, I just wanna kinda get that point out there, rather than raise any kinda big question I guess I'll mention 3F3, which is a correspondence complaining about fireworks, more than one complaint. Now, there's a surprise, but I, most of us, we participated in the joint entities meeting this morning, and there was a pretty good article about it in the DI this morning as well. And Jeff gave us some data that I simply repeated, about the number of calls for service, especially in comparison to what it had been in, in a previous year, and it's a pretty dramatic difference, like a tenfold difference. And we discussed somewhat about things that we could do in the coming year, or perhaps in January, about, about the use of fireworks here, and I'm sure staff's gonna come to us with recommendations.
Yeah, and just for everybody else's benefit, I gave the mayor some advance information, it's not complete, knowing that that was a topic on the agenda yesterday at the joint meetings, you will all be getting a comprehensive report from staff on our experience with fireworks this, this year, and, and some of our thoughts going forward. We will be looking at the conditions of our temporary use permits, that the tents utilized to set up. We'll also be looking at sales restrictions, now that some of those issues have been flushed out in the courts with other cities, so there's some opportunities there. The Planning and Zoning Commission also expressed an interest for, for us to go down this path, so probably in the next couple of weeks, maybe not before your August 1st meeting, but certainly before your August 15th meeting, we'll have a more detailed analysis to give you.
Good deal. According to my timetable, we have another three and a half minutes, so can we turn to info packet discussion? June 22nd, any questions, about it? All right, I'm not hearing any. June 29th?
Just a quick question, what is a solutions architect?
Somebody who solves things.
Good question.
Hi there. A solutions architect is an ITs position, it's a position that really is kinda a problem solver. They take a, a problem, and they, to look at it in IT terms, and determine what the best solution is, whether it is programming, buying software, and kinda analyze that situation, and then they bring in the parties that need to be brought in to, I guess, resolve their issues.
It's a miracle worker.
Funny, what's the pay scale, page, pay scale for miracle workers?
Probably fairly high in the IT world.
Okay, can we turn to July the 6th, that info packet?
So, again, I just wanna bring up the transit, if, if the council's uncomfortable with us going forward, that's fine, you just need to let us know, because it's, it's time for us to give the green light to the manufacturer, or to tell them, stick with the original paint scheme.
I'd say go ahead.
I'd say go ahead.
Go ahead. You got five.
Six, seven.
All right, why don't we stop there, we'll start, so we'll pick back up with the July 13th packet. After, so we have to adjourn this till after the formal meeting.
July 13th, info packet.
Yeah. So, Item 5 through 7.
5 through 7.
Great work. Appreciated the, obviously, the Affordable Housing Action Plan update, really excited to see what the Housing Trust Fund has been doing with the, the money that we allocated to them. And then from, you know, really enjoy the quarterly reports from the Equity Director in regards to the social justice and racial equity work that they're doing, and also enjoy kinda the Chief Matherley having that information and read, as far as the updates that he has to his plan, and the steps going forward.
Very easy to track.
Yeah, it's good work.
I think Kingsley just covered it, so...
Those are big things.
There wasn't anything left.
There's not stuff left.
Are we fine on KXIC?
So, on 5, 6, and 7, could I add a couple comments on those? With regard to the Item 5, the Affordable Housing Action Plan update, I, I think we need to have good ways of measuring, basically, output, performance measures about how we're doing with regard to the affordability of housing. And, and Jeff and I have talked about that before, and I'm sure something will come up, but I'll bring it up during our budget discussion, I think we need to have, need to be able to track that kinda thing. And the other thing I wanted to mention with regard to, what is it, Item 7, and Jody Matherley's fine report, is just to note that I've heard really good reports about the increased foot patrols south of Highway 6. I think they're having a very positive effect in that area, and neighbors are really appreciating the foot patrols. So, praise to the PD for that. Let's see, did, do any of you have any other items?
Well, I would, I would agree with you, Jim, in this, if, if what you meant in part, anyway, was that with the affordable housing, I, I have a hard time keeping track of how many affordable housing units we're generating. I know we're, you know, with certain projects, we'll get X number, and so on and so forth, but I, I think it would be helpful to sort of see where, you know, how those are adding up, and, and where they're coming from. And also, was a little bit unclear on the, the one on Riverfront Crossings, which is, what project was that, that's mentioned?
The trust fund report, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Simon is on, or represented on the board there.
The $800,000 one, the large one. That is a new project in Riverfront Crossings that was a housing fellowship application. They'll be the ones managing the affordable units. I don't believe that they've closed on the purchase of the land yet, so I don't know that the exact location is public yet, but it is within Riverfront Crossings, walkable to many services on a transit route.
Okay, with regard to Item 10, Item IP Number 10, the draft minutes of the Airport Commission's June 10th meeting, they had a very interesting discussion about the Airport Commission's strategic plan, or the airport's strategic plan. And as I read that, I thought, I, I don't see any reference to the council's strategic plan, especially the core ideas of inclusive, just, and sustainable. I, I would like to see the commission open to the fact that we, in fact, do have a strategic plan, and it would be very good to see the commission find ways to alter their strategic plan in a manner that they think is consistent with ours. Now, I know they have a lot of things that focus explicitly on the airport and all that, and I, more power to them, I'm not, not objecting to that at all, but I thought, for example, that there might be opportunities for the, the airport and the commission to invite people from the minority communities in our city out to the airport, to see that, in fact, there is an airport, and in fact, there, there are flights that take off and land there, and how it's operated. One of the formative experiences of my childhood, actually, was to go to an airport terminal that was located about five blocks away from where I lived. And I can remember going up, up to the top where, in this tiny little airport, which was actually, at the time, the main airport in Louisville, Kentucky, went up to the top there and saw, you know, some kind of air traffic control, or guiding planes in, and I thought, it was really exciting, you know? And I think, you know, the commission could reach out in a much more effective way.
You know, one of the things they have done recently, and I think they do it every summer, is they offer free rides to kids. I mean, and so, I mean, I think that's a big effort that they make to, to reach out to the community, 'cause there's no cost, it's pilots who volunteer, you know, parents have to sign their kids up, 'cause of course, they have to have permission to do it. So, they, I mean, they do some outreach.
Yeah, yeah. I, I certainly do not mean to be speaking badly of the commissioners, or Mike Tharp, or anybody else out there, I just think there are connections with our strategic plan that they should be alert to and respond to. Okay, anything else? Hearing nothing, I think we're done for the evening. Thanks, everybody.